Spokespersons to express the group's concern because each side will have, be allowed on ten minutes to speak. Plats, rezoning, revised master plans, and street renaming require a public hearing, after which the planning commission will deliberate and render its decision. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in the petition's request are required to recuse themselves. Do we have one item that has been removed, item number six? Is that correct? Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes? We've had an opportunity to look at and review the minutes. Is there a...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll get Miss Anne on... Second. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. James, you gonna help us tonight? All right.
The agenda is presented by Flowers and White, representing T-Square LLC. This is request final approval of Dalton Cove at Taylor Lakes, plat number one, located on the west side of Taylor Lakes Parkway, approximately 200 feet north of Chardon Drive in a PUD zoning district.
Good evening. Brad Flowers with Flowers and White Engineering, representing T-Square LLC. We bring to you tonight a request for final plat approval for Dalton Cove. Y'all saw this last time, I do believe. If you recall, the petitioner went through planning commission back in August of last year and got the PUD revised for all of Taylor Lakes. And when we did, basically, this is what was approved in the PUD, this layout. And so, we're bringing this before you to go ahead and get the plat approved. There's 53 lots, 44 of them, I can't remember the exact width thing, 44 of them are 60-foot lots, and nine of them are 70-foot lots. You see there on the screen. Open for any questions that you may have.
Brad, wasn't this just nothing more than just a request to have communication with some of the folks out there? Wasn't that what the...
If...
Last month?
Yeah, if you recall, the owner wasn't here, and there was some questions about covenants and restrictions. And at that time, we basically said, you know, covenants and restrictions are not a public, maintained, or policed item when it comes to plats or anything of that nature. And that the covenants and restrictions were not at that time adopted and recorded, that they get recorded typically at the time that the plat's recorded. The owner was not in town at the time, and we did not have those. They did not have those prepared because we're not prepared to record the plat. So, we went ahead and withdrew, letting the owner fulfill his covenants and restrictions, which they do have. And they are here to speak on that behalf if you have any questions about that. Jessica, you are correct.
Okay, okay.
Is that individual here tonight?
The owner?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I do have him here if you'd like to ask any questions.
No, I'm telling you, the man lived adjacent to that, that was here speaking against you.
I believe so.
Are you satisfied, sir?
Yeah, come up, give your name and address if you would.
My name is Keith Roll, and I live at 5549 Chardon Drive, so one of the adjacent lots. Like he said, August, you guys approved a replat to shrink down the lots and to put more houses on it. One of the questions that came up between the homeowners and I believe you guys was, will they, the covenants that we're all bound by, will they be bound by them? And they assured us at that time they would. But like he said, they haven't been written up. As far as I know, maybe they've been written since last month. They're not on the website yet. So, what I did find was the newest, where it says Chesapeake Pass up there, D.R. Horton Homes, some of the newer homes, D.R. Horton, I believe, is the same builder that's gonna build in this proposed Dalton Cove. And the covenants that they have on their website say that the houses must be at least 2,200 square feet, living area, air-conditioned, and at least 1,800 square feet on the first floor excluding open porches, attached garages, or other non-living areas. Of those D.R. Horton Homes, I quickly pulled six today from the tax records that don't fit their own covenants, houses as small as 1,700 square feet, 1,740. The other thing that I picked up was that they're correct. For each different pod, there are different covenants. But the one line that I pulled out of every single one of them says, "The architecture of any house to be created on any lot shall be generally in substantial harmony and conformity with the general prevailing type of architecture in the vicinity." So, the Chesapeake Pass houses are like three sides hardy board, maybe a little stone or brick on the front. Like I said, they don't fit the size requirements by their covenants. And they don't, the rest of the houses are all brick. So, as far as I know, they haven't told us what they're gonna put in that red zone there. But the history shows that they're not following their own covenants. And they were a little bit, I feel like misleading, when they said that they would follow covenants since they didn't exist.
Okay.
So, you want assurances that the square footage will be met? Is that what you want?
Well, I think, they told us that there's a covenant written now. None of us have seen it. I'd like to make sure the covenants are in line with the other covenants that we're bound by, and that, you know, that they're published. I think writing them after they build the houses is a little off of it. I mean, the big thing is, that's why we have PUDs and stuff like that. They shrunk it to put more smaller houses in, and we're just looking to protect our property value, honestly.
No, what I'm asking you is, if they assured you of the square footage, would you be satisfied? That's basically what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think square footage is first, is one thing, but I think the biggest thing is that harmony with the other houses. We'd really like them to match our houses, to look similar. That's, I think, the biggest thing. I understand that they don't all have to be big houses, but they should match the neighborhood. It's kind of my thing, some of the guys I've talked to as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to? James, you wanna kind of give an overview of what a plat, the concerns that we have to work with as a planning commission?
Yes, sir. The, what's before you, and properly before you, is a detailed map that will be turned into a recorded plat that sets the boundaries of the properties. It also does the dedication of right-of-ways to the city. Any easements are marked, whether private or public. The private coven restrictions are just that, and they will be a civil matter should they not be met. And legally, the planning commission can't entertain private covenants and restrictions just because that's what they are, private covenants and restrictions.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, but I want to make sure that this gentleman understands that in another verbiage, what he just said was, "That does not apply for the approval process of the plat itself."
Yes, sir, but when you guys approved the replat to go from 200 houses down to 250, isn't that kind of based on them doing what they're, I mean, you just changed setbacks and you changed covenants? Wouldn't that lie? I'm ignorant, I don't know.
I'm all that, again, this, we're trying to deal with what we're...
There again, there again, the revised master plan would have been dealing with the lay of the land, and the lot sizes, and the dedications in those portions on a preliminary basis. This is a final plat. This is taking that to the next level. Any testimony during the, would have been just, you know, the developer trying to, you know, explain what they were trying to do. And obviously, some things have changed or whatever, but we're still back to the fact they're private and they're civil.
Okay. Any other comments, any other questions?
Yeah, James, were those numbers or dimensions have been on that first plan?
No, sir, no, sir. It would have been more, Mr. Reed, it would have been more conceptual because they can't, they can't fine-tune them until they get permission to go that with the PUDs. And it cost a lot to get to the point where we're at now, and so that's where, but it's more of a guide.
As a courtesy, do you want to address any of his concerns?
Yes, sir. Let me make something clear first. Covenants and restrictions go to each plat. When you have a PUD, you have different pods. Each pod is built differently. So, the covenants and restrictions change per pod. So, the different types of requirements that you have on each plat is a little bit different, doesn't always have to be, but typically is. So, in Chesapeake Pass, I will say, there were amended covenants and restrictions inside of that. So, everything that was built does match the covenants and restrictions. There's nothing in violation. I will state that for the record. The owner, which controls the HOA and controls the neighborhood, modifies those periodically as they go to these different PUDs, and so that has been done. These are written. I believe the owner has a copy of those, and probably more than willing to give this gentleman a copy of those, I would say, yes, to review. But there's, there's nothing to hide. We're basically going back now for the plating of the property and then move forward from there.
Okay. Anything else? If not, motions in order?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, it's five to one. Okay, thank you. Brad?
The next item on the agenda is also presented by Flowers and White Engineering, representing Tom Cruz. This is request for final approval of North Chase Plat number five, located on the southeast corner of Contractors Drive in North Chase Boulevard in an M1 industrial zoning district.
All right, so what I've got before you, we brought back probably two months ago, I guess, this at the corner, not Contractors in North Chase. We have a development plan on that site. When the development plan went through, we had already brought the plat to you for approval. One of the requirements on the development plan was onsite retention, even though we have our own detention pond back behind to accept the water. That wasn't accepted by the engineering department. So, we had to go in and put in our own pond, even though there's a six-acre lake right there. And so, because we put in a pond now on our own site, we had to expand the limits of the property to incorporate that pond into the property. So, therefore, we're having to replat since we brought in additional lands. Or not replat, but resubmit the plat since it hadn't been recorded. So, that's what we're doing.
Okay, any questions?
So, that ditch between the two is what you're calling a retention pond?
No, sir. We have, on the construction plans, we've got a pond that's going in the rear of the property, back behind it. The ditch has been there from day one. It takes everything from North Chase Boulevard off storm drain and runs it back to the six-acre pond that they built when they started North Chase.
Is there plans to enclose that ditch?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, motions in order?
I move to approve.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad.
The next item on the agenda is Jeff Code Engineering and Surveyors, representing Roosevelt Hardy. The subject is request final approval of Roosevelt Hardy Plat number one, located on the southwest corner of Kennelworth Street and Major Street in an R50 single-family residential in an M3 general industrial zoning district.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Hughes with Jeff Code Engineering and Surveyors. We are asking for final approval of the Roosevelt Hardy Plat number one.
What's going on there, Steve?
It's being, it's incorporating two lots that were residential into, combining it into one large residential.
It is gonna be residential, okay, thank you.
They plan to enlarge that house?
I'm not sure if they're going to add on to the existing structure or demo and add a larger structure in the center. But it's gonna be one residence on the two lots.
Okay. Anyone else have a question or comment? Anyone wish to speak for or against? Not a motions in order? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, had, did you get the first and the second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda is presented by the Broadway Group, representing Floyd Robinson, requesting final approval for TBG Norman Bridge Plat number one, located on northeast corner of Winston Drive and Stately Drive in a B5 commercial zoning district.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Deanna Heitch. I'm a development manager with the Broadway Group. I'm under contract and authorized agent for the current owner of this property, Floyd Robinson. We are simply looking to divide the existing parcel, it's a little over five acres, 5.3, into two parcels for future commercial development.
Okay, any questions, any comments?
Do you have plans for the, for the commercial? I'm sorry.
No, that's what I was going to ask.
Sir, I'm sorry, say again.
Do you have any plans for the commercial development?
I do.
What is it?
Commercial retail facility.
Okay.
What she's, it was what?
Commercial retail facility, 10,640 square feet, standalone. Proposed driveway on Winston.
But you're not gonna say what?
I'm under a confidentiality agreement.
Well, then, it'd be tough to say what, wouldn't it?
I could say it, but I'd probably...
You can say what anyway, can't you?
Is this gonna be a new structure in addition to the old bingo hall?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wish to speak for or against?
Is this, is this, is this commercial property going to be something that's going to enhance or improve the community itself?
I believe that it would be an enhancement.
What did she say? I can't, I can't.
She said, she believes that it would be an enhancement.
I believe it would be enhancement. We're gonna, we will be offering you a general variety retail store that will allow you to make quick trips for things that you need on a daily basis on your way to and from work or to and from school. Oh, my goodness, the kids have a party today. I need to stop and get some treats for the party. Oh, my gosh, we're out of milk. I'm on my way home from work. We're gonna grab a gallon of milk, those types of things.
Not a Family Dollar story, is it?
Ma'am, I'm under a...
We have tons of those.
Commercial retail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clements, also to answer your question, there'll be a detailed landscape plan that will help take care of that sea of asphalt and concrete, so that, that would be probably very beneficial to the area.
A lot of that will go away.
So, a lot of the parking's gone, right?
Sir?
A lot of the parking will be gone, yeah. No, 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 I had to turn it up. Okay. Any other comments? If not, motions in order?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
The fifth item on the agenda is presented by Alliance Land Surveying, representing Quick Trip Corporation. They're requesting final approval of Quick Trip number 7174, plat number one, located on the southwest corner of West South Boulevard and I-65 in an M1 zoning district.
Good evening, Michael Burke, 952 Old Peachtree Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia, here on behalf of Quick Trip Corporation, pursuing a final plat approval for a combination of several lots there at South Boulevard and the interstate for the purpose of a convenient store of fuel. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about Quick Trip or this particular project.
Convenient gas, gas and et cetera, or just...
Convenience store of fuel.
Fuel and...
Diesel offer, yeah.
Okay.
Will there be alcoholic beverages sold?
What was that?
Will there be alcoholic beverages sold?
It would be part of the application, yes.
Is that beer and wine, or is that just beer, or...
Beer and wine application.
Not whiskey, then?
No, no.
Not like a state store, then?
That's right.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Anybody wish to speak for or against? If not, motions in order?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that was a four to two. Okay, did not get a, get a pass. You wanna explain where we are?
Yes, sir, we, we, we're gonna need, there's gotta be some validity in denial.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm a petitioners commission to reconsider because this gentleman came in several months ago, and he basically gave us a pretty good format of how they was gonna put that Quick Trip and exactly how it was formatted, how they was gonna come in and out. I mean, when we, when we get these people like this that come in here, we got to remember that he been here before, and we approved them that time. And then we come back now, but it's final approval, and we deny.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm asking, I mean, you can deny it or not, but I'm asking that we reconsider based on the fact that, first of all, he is in District Four. District Four understand exactly what's needed right there in that area, and that's one of the reasons why we're talking with my council people and all that stuff. We would like that Quick Trip right there.
Okay, fair enough.
So, I ask for a reconsideration.
Is there, is there a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, I'll reconsider it.
Okay. Anne, is there, are you...
If it's in Reggie's neighborhood and he wants it in his neighborhood, then I would reconsider.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six has been pulled.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am. We made every effort to communicate to the neighborhood, contacted the council, we contacted the property owner that sent out the hand mail, copy of the letters that we mailed, and we contacted the homeowners association president and everybody that's been calling in our offices, received countless phone calls.
I think they're talking about six, probably six. You need to come up to the microphone.
But this item is with the wrong staff. It does not meet the engineering department's requirements, relocating the drainage and the property owner's engineering to afford that, and you'll have to...
Tommy, which one are we talking about?
This is the one that was pulled.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, Mr. Pierce was supposed to notify you.
Okay, we've had it taken off of the agenda tonight, so...
You're gonna have to consult with Mr. Pierce as to what you need to do.
I'm sorry, he didn't get hold of you. He said he would.
I apologize if you were contacted.
You could bring it back.
In any event, I'm sorry we wasted your time.
Ma'am, we apologize, but it had been taken off, so we're gonna have to move forward. Okay, all right. Number seven?
Number seven is presented by Testkee Land Surveyors, presenting Tanya Wilson. Request final approval of Tanya Wilson Plat number one, located on the south side of Williams Road, approximately 675 feet east of Fuller Road, in an R50 residential zoning district.
Hello, my name is Tanya Wilson.
Give it the address if you would to, please.
I'm sorry.
Give your address also, please.
My current address is 6730 Taylor Reed Road, Montgomery, Alabama, 36016.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I want to divide the plat, the properties, so that I could put residents on plat one.
On both lots?
On one lot.
Just on the one lot, okay.
Plat one.
What does, is it, Mr. Taylor lives, has that property right in front of you?
Yes.
What is, what is his, have you had a conversation with him?
I have not.
What are you gonna put on there? You gonna build a house or...
A manufactured home.
Manufactured home, yeah.
Okay.
Is that existing concrete driveway gonna be a part of these two lots?
It will be.
Do you want to talk to him?
To Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
I spoke with his wife, we, I mean, we grew up, that's our childhood friend.
I mean, but do you want to talk to him about your project?
I will.
Number seven.
Then, do you want to bring it back next month?
I kinda wanted to move forward with it because I'm on a tight constraint with my lease, and I've been working on the land for a while.
Okay, so you don't want, you don't, you don't want to bring it back? You want, you want us to vote on it tonight? Is that right, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir. Could you tell your name? Speaking to the mic, and your name.
Yes, I'm Curtis Pierce, I'm the surveyor.
Oh, okay, sir, okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right.
Mr. Chair, I do want to say something. One thing is, why, why are we asking her, do she want to talk to Mr. Taylor? We had a public notice out there, if Mr. Taylor was interested, he'd be here. So, I don't think we should be actually questioning her as far as, has she talked to Mr. Taylor? Apparently, Mr. Taylor online, he ain't here. That's my take on it, and I think we should vote on it.
But, but this is not the first time that we've asked developers or whoever...
But we got a public notice, and Mr. Taylor ain't interested, or he would be here.
Wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish. This is not the first time that we've asked people who have brought things on the agenda, have they talked to the people in the neighborhood?
Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, that's generally done, that's generally done in the rezoning. The property owners, the surrounding property owners are notified of the plat, and that's the notification, and then, of course, the property is posted.
Are they notified about what the plat is going to become, or what's gonna be, what's gonna come to the plat?
They're notified, they're notified of the activity, and that's, that gives them the opportunity to call us, and we can explain it to them, what's happening, and we can direct them to the webpage where they can see it and things like that. So, yes, sir, to answer your question, it gives them the opportunity to investigate it.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying.
Sure.
I understand what he's saying.
Yes, sir.
But the questions that we're asking them are not unique questions. We've asked... We, we've asked, I don't know how many people have they talked to, to the people in the surrounding area? And, and this is really my first time getting a response back from you guys that, well, they were notified.
As I said, Mr. Reed, that, those...
No, I understand what you're saying.
Those, but those conversations are more rezonings, a plat, uh, the plat that meets the guidelines is, is just that, it meets the guidelines.
I understand what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for, uh, speaking, but I spoke to everybody in the neighborhood, and everybody knows what's gonna happen.
Well, he just asked.
I just, I have not, I have not spoke to Mr. Taylor.
She hasn't spoken to him directly, but she spoke to other neighbors.
Okay, well?
And they didn't have any opposition?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, anyone wish to speak, any other questions or comments in the planning commission? All right, anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, a motion's in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a, a motion to approve, I mean, excuse me, there's a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
The eighth item on the agenda is represented by Willie Thomas, representing the same. Request to rezone one parcel of land located on the west side of Kennelworth Street, approximately three hundred feet south of Major Street. From R fifty, single-family residential zoning district, to an R ninety-nine S mobile home subdivision zoning district.
Yes, my name is Willie Thomas, eleven one forty B Mathis Street on Maxwell Air Force Base. I request permission to rezone the spot to put a modular home on.
Okay, any comments? Any questions, planning commission, anyone wish to speak for or against this? Come forward if you would, and give your, your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is...
Just pull, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Vera Ashley, I live at twenty-seven Major Street, and I received a letter from this board to come in if I was for or against it, and I'm for Mr. Thomas putting his home there. He's on his own family's property, and he has served our country for forty-two years.
So you're speaking in favor?
For him, in favor, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, okay, okay, okay. Anyone else? Robert, did you want, oh, excuse me, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, come on, come on.
Also, good evening, my name is Cynthia Hardy, from Hunter Station, and where he's planning to put his mobile home. We were born and raised in that area, right now, the area is really deteriorating because nobody is, uh, putting anything to advance to make our community look better. I have a mobile home, and I'm actually on the other side of, um, Hunter, Hunter Station, I'm on Washington Ferry Road. And my home is bricked in, and I really feel that he should give the opportunity to, uh, represent Hunter Station in a positive way.
Well, thank you, appreciate that comment. Robert, did you, did you want to say?
Yes, sir, Robert Smith, City Planning Director. I, I got my comments in to the staff a little late, so I don't know if you, they made it to you all or not, but, um, I, I did have a little opposition to the, the proposed rezoning. Largely because if you just look around in that general area, you don't see a lot of mobile homes, um, here, but I heard him mention modular, a modular home. So is it a modular home, or is it a mobile? It, it is a mobile home lengthwise? Yeah, so that, that was, that was generally my opposition, was because it was being proposed as a mobile home, and I don't, I don't see within this little general area with all of the lots, I don't see any mobile homes at all. Typically, I'm not opposed to it if I see some mobile home development similar to the last res, uh, plat where you saw a lot of mobile homes around, but I, I only see, uh, regular stick-built foundation construction. So that, that's my, that's my objection to it, because it is a proposed to be a mobile home.
Have you been to the site, Robert?
No. There, there is mobile homes out there.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There's mobile homes out there, on Major and Kennelworth.
Whereabout? If you, if you're pointing? You, you, you saying this is a mobile home right here? It, it just doesn't, doesn't look like a mobile home to me, I don't...
Did you go to the site, Robert?
It, it is, matter of fact, on, on Major Street, there's two mobile homes. One of them, I just happen to know where the Freemans lived there. And they actually, the reason why it looked like a house, because they actually added the porch and the other stuff to it.
Okay, they, they made it.
It's actually a mobile home.
Okay, okay, well, if that's the case, then I'll, I'll back my objection down to it.
If you, Robert, if you, uh, go north from, from where that is?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, if you go north, there are a couple down there.
Yeah, I, I noticed that there are some just outside of the picture, but right here in, in the middle, just right in this little general area right here, I, I just didn't see a lot of mobile homes right in here, even though there may be some.
And I'm, I'm beyond it with you, Robert, that area fluid so bad, that they need a mobile home, 'cause sometimes they need a boat one, to get out there.
All right, well, I'll, I'll back, I'll back away on my objection to it.
All right, thank you, sorry, would, you got a comment, please, sir?
My name is Joshua Price, Osborne Price, um, I've been knowing him for years, I feel like he should put a mobile home there as well. I received a letter in the mail, uh, one fifteen Kennelworth Street, I'm the property owner, and I'm all for it as well.
You know, this is an unusual situation tonight. We, we usually have just the opposite, and people explaining why. It's nice to have a, a gentleman who is talked to and, and is admired by all, by your neighbors, so, okay.
Move to approve.
Second?
All right, did you get the first and the second? All of those in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
The ninth item is represented by Richard Casby, representing the same, presented by Richard Casby, representing himself. Request to rezone one parcel of land located on the west side of South Hope Street, approximately two hundred feet north of Mill Street. From R sixty D duplex residential zoning to B two commercial.
Hi, everybody, my name's Richard Casby, I live at seventeen thirty-three South Brook Drive. And I'm here for a rezoning, for ten twenty-four, uh, South Hope Street, from residential to commercial. I would like to bring a grocery store to that area, because it's, it's a food desert. Uh, the store that was, that people used to go to there, Piglet Way, is closed now. So now they have to jump the interstate, head to Walmart. I'm, I'm trying to get a store there where they can walk to. Most of the people I've talked to say yes, and I got a petition here, signed by the people of that area. And they always like, hey, we want this, help us out. So I said, okay, I'll do it. And I'm here today.
Yeah, they, they tore down, they tore down the hub.
Yeah, and I hooked, I used to go there when I was a child.
Hub Superit?
Yeah, Hub Superit.
Yeah, it's gone.
I know, I know, so is, so is the owner.
Yeah, it was destroyed down.
In fact, the son of the owner is gone too, who's a good friend of mine.
Yeah, I grew up in that area.
Did you?
And when I went to the army, and I came back, I said, well, let me see what I can do to help the community. And so here I am.
Um, let me, I'm gonna ask this of the staff, if you don't mind, just, uh, in the remarks, we're talking about neighborhood grocery store, deli shop, uh, deli sandwich shop, pizzeria, ice cream sh, uh, shop, and simular. What does simular mean?
That's basically just your average mom and pop store. That's what the, we're trying to keep the idea of.
It's funny, when I, and when, when I read this, that I thought of Hub Superit. So...
Wow, deja vu.
Tears, huh?
All over again.
Okay, same old, all over. All right, um, anyone else have a comment?
I do, I do, Mr. Chair. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm totally in favor of a neighborhood grocery there, that, the only problem that I'm gonna have is we, I'd like to see us put a queue on it. And for the simple reason, if that grocery store, for some reason, don't thrive and survive, next thing you know, we gonna have in that area, there's another event center or another whatever. So I'd like to, I'd like to definitely put a queue on it.
All right, and what, what would you add as the queue?
Well, I mean, only a grocery store. I mean, that's, I'd like to see it as grocery store, I, I mean, I got no problem with the, the other stuff, the pizzeria, the ice cream shop, but I don't want to see a, I don't want to see another entertainment center.
I got you.
Because that, right now, they popping up in shotgun houses, event centers, and all that stuff.
Do you have a, a problem with that, sir?
Okay, um, it's not gonna fail. The only way it fail is if I die. Now, if I die, then it may fail, but I've explained to my family, hey, I want this to be a grocery store, and I want this to be something for my grandbaby, she's twelve. And I'm gonna teach her the grocery business, and for her kids, I want her to teach them the grocery business. This is not gonna be one of those shale places where people come in and all of a sudden now it's a club. It's not even gonna even look, you won't even be able to make this into a club, you have to tear the whole building down in order to do that. And then they have to come back and see you all, and you be like, hey, it was a grocery store, and you can't have a club here. So, I mean, I, I don't, I wouldn't...
That's what the queue for, Mr. Casby.
That's, that's what he's asking to, to do.
That's the only thing that the qualifying is, is that it'd be a grocery store, and if anybody else wanted to do anything with that, God forbid that you do die, then they'll have to come back before us to get it, in order to do anything else with it outside of the grocery store.
Well, I don't want it to be restricted, the only thing I can have there is a grocery spot, 'cause I may want to do something else on top of the building, uh, you know, just in case. I just don't want it to be where you can't have nothing but just a, I don't want it to be where you can't do anything else, or I can't do anything else to the building, period. I mean, uh...
Something else like what, sir?
Hmm?
Something else like what?
Well, uh, that area also is missing a, say like a, a sports pub or something?
Nope.
Or something where a, you can get up on, that's if you get on top of the building, you can have sandwiches. Or a, you know, just a night spot where you could have, uh, dinner, or something like that. Uh, anything to that nature, but I really want it to be a grocery store, but I just don't want it to be to the point where I can't do anything else. I know, don't make it with grocery store and nothing else ever.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, we can queue both ways, and we had conversations with Mr. Casby, and, um, the reason the, the, uh, agenda has what it has in it is because that's what we believe. I believe prudent thing to do would be get back with him and find out what he, he's willing to prohibit. We go that direction sometimes too, we queue it to what it can be, and sometimes we, we, we queue it to what's prohibited. And that's, that's not really something that can be decided...
Denied.
At this venue.
Right.
So I, my suggestion from staff is that we delay this, he can get back with us, and he can tell us what he's willing to, to prohibit. And, uh, because we, we can't, I see what Mr. Dunn's saying, and we can't, we can't settle that this way.
Okay, tell you what, let's just do the grocery store, that's it.
No, uh, sir?
So let's just do that.
Sir, you, you don't want to restrict yourself that way?
Well, I, I want this to be a grocery store. If I want anything else anywhere else, then I go somewhere else in the city and do it. I want this to be a grocery store, so if we can just move it in general and, and approve this as a grocery store, then I go with that. That's it.
Well, let Tommy finish, Tommy, what were you gonna say?
I couldn't understand the question.
Well, you know what, the only thing I said something, was we didn't say we're gonna, uh, make it, we're gonna limit it, but tell you what, let's make it grocery store, let's do that. So I'll go with the grocery store. And that's it.
No, I was saying, Tommy, you were about to make a point, what was that, what was the point you were gonna make?
Well, the reason I, I said that a, a grocery store may or may not work, um, there are lots of other approaches to, to pack, doing the queue. If, um, were the grocery store to close, and it opened up, somebody wanted to open it up as a lounge, or tavern, or anything like that, or entertainment center, they would, you know, wanted alcohol, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment because the location is among some residential, within two hundred and fifty feet. And the Board of Adjustment would have to make a recommendation, and then it would be up to the council to decide whether or not to give them a license, an alcohol license. So there, there's some more checks and balances in there, I'm just afraid that by just putting it on there, restricting it to grocery store only, that, and I hope it works just like you planned it to work, but sometimes things change, ownership changes, and people, uh, you know, they might want to put a, a pizza restaurant in there, or...
A barber shop.
Or barber shop, or something like that, by just putting a, a strictly a grocery store on there, I think the gentleman's not being far sighted enough to, uh, to consider that.
Well, if you say, well, if you say grocery store, but you have like a deli, you have all this other stores in there, bakery, things like that, I mean, that's the same thing I would like to have.
But, excuse me, and what Mr. Center said make more sense to me, why don't, why don't we queue it to what it can't be? And, I mean, my, my biggest issue in, in that area in particular is we don't want no clubs sitting in the middle of the residential area.
Okay.
So why can't we queue it to where it can't be a club, or, or...
You could, you could queue it to not be a club, and not be an event center?
Right.
And you could make that part, you could queue it at that if, if the, if the commission failed.
I'd much rather do that, because if you wanted to add a barber shop, see, that neighborhood got no problem with a barber shop, but I know that they gonna have a problem with a event center, or a club, or, but, and, and the reason why I brought up the queue is because of that. I mean, I got one right now on, on West El Jezmont, they trying to put a event center right in the middle of the neighborhood between people houses, we ain't gonna have it. I mean, we gotta stop that at some point. So I prefer that we queue it to what it can't be.
We can do, we can do that, sir, you're, you can do that, sir.
I like that.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion with the...
I make a motion to approve with the restrictions of a nightclub, or, or event center, or just anything like that where alcohol and that stuff is served.
So are you saying without alcohol?
Right.
Well, if he's got a grocery store, could he, you're saying you, he couldn't sell beer? No, no, no.
And, and see, I wouldn't want to do that.
Uh, that's what I'm, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm...
Right, I wouldn't want to do that.
Tommy, what they're, what they're doing is they're asking you, please sit down with them, and y'all come up with the items that you don't want.
Well, the only thing is, uh, uh, anything that you allow in a regular grocery store, that's all I want to allow in this one, so that's it. I mean, no more and no less.
Mr. Harburg, if he went through the procedures, he would be, he would be allowed to, to sell wine and beer.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, at, as part of the grocery store, but not serving, that's, that's, that would be the club.
It would have to be like he's shopping in a grocery store.
Yes, sir. So restricting it to no club or activity centers, I believe covers Mr. Dunn's and protects the neighborhood.
Right.
If Ms. Bussley's good with that.
Okay, well, I mean, what's your reactions to what?
Everything's good.
Okay, all right.
I'm moving to approve with those restrictions.
Okay, you, you restrict it to, say it again, James, so we can make sure we got it down.
No clubs or event centers.
Okay, no clubs or event centers.
Or lounge?
Lounge, anything that would follow it.
Or anything simular.
Or anything simular, whatever that means.
That's simular, that's simular, that defines simular.
We can, we can, we can, we can get the dictionary out.
We in trouble. Okay, all right, you're, you're fine with that. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, Miss, all right, Anne, thank you. All those, uh, in favor? All right, sir, when you gonna have it open?
When I'm open, I gotta get that money up.
Go to the banker, go to the banker, huh?
Thank you.
All right, absolutely, you want it? All right, uh, we've got a, y'all with...
I got a comment, I want to... I got a comment I wanna make. Uh, who, who came up with this list?
I'm sorry, sir.
Ms. Hines passed it out, so I'm quite sure she can...
This is the one...
That's the, the list that's showing everybody being current.
Yeah, but four of us on there, isn't it term three years?
Unless you're, unless your councilman reappoints you.
Well, yeah. Four of us on here have, are listed as being expired in two years.
Right. So the explanation for that is not, you have three term, three-year term, not you three years. So when you were appointed, you were appointed in the term of someone else?
Right.
So it carries on from that term.
That doesn't apply to me. That was years ago.
So that's why it's a little off. And that's, that's for everybody.
That would just apply to real, real important...
The, the important thing is, and I thank y'all for getting this, you know, this is the thing that, that I used to get once a year, and just for my own justification. And this is what we, we said will be coming out in January of each year. But I would ask you, not January, January's too late. Let's do it, uh, let's get it in November. Okay? And, no, the next one will be November, then you start doing November. That way, that gives us 60 days to get it cleaned up.